Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. It's a regular monthly council meeting. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2024. It's just after 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the public comments section. We have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Ashley Mercado.
Hello. Hi, we just wanted to thank you for all your years of service and we're very excited to see the transition from one councilman to another. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, it's under item 1A. Consider approving minutes of council meetings held on March 11th and April 15th, 2024. Those minutes are in the packet. Anybody have any changes to those? Clarifications? Is there a motion to approve item 1A?
I make a motion that we approve item 1A.
There's a motion of second to approve item 1A, which is the minutes on two prior meetings, March 11th and April 15th, 2024. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item 2 is discussion of possible action regarding certification of the summary of election results and conduct official canvas of the general election held on May 6th, 2023 for the city of McGregor. Okay, so the official canvas, the summary of election. Position of mayor, Jim Lilly, uncontested. Position for council member Ward 2, Bonnie Mullins, 93 votes. Andy McGuire, 26 votes. Position for council member Ward 4, Rene Flores, uncontested. There are documents attached being the McLennan County election official results, general election held on May 4th, 2024. And that consists only of the single contested vote or contested election that we had. And identically, that reads off as Bonnie Mooney Mullins acquiring 93 total votes, being six absentee, 23 early, and 64 on election day. Andy McGuire, one absentee, one early, 24 on election day for a total of 26. So 119 total votes cast in that single and only contested election. And again, Bonnie Mullins is the winner with 93 votes to 26 votes. So that is the official canvas. Do we need to take action? All right, so council, is there a motion to approve the official summary of general election, May 4th, 2024?
I make a motion, we approve the election results of the official canvas of 2023 or 24 for the city elections.
There's a motion of second under item 2 to approve the canvas of the general election, the votes held on May 4th, 2024. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. So to item 3, that is the city secretary to administer statements and oaths of office to newly elected officials. These documents will be held on file with the city secretary. So with that.
All right, so I'm just gonna read it off and those may... And say, do you, Jim Lilly, as mayor, Bonnie Mullins for as council member for Ward 2, Rene Flores for Ward 4, solemnly swear that you will faithfully, oh yes, sorry, faithfully execute the duties of the office of the city of McGregor, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of your ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so have you got it? Congratulations.
All right, I'm not sticking around to say goodbye.
I remember we fixed that clock before we left.
Well, hello, everybody.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
It's, I'm sure for a lot of people, it's kind of weird to see a different face up here in the center of the bias. Okay, we're on to item number five on the agenda.
Oh, item number four.
Oh.
Sorry. And you should be in that black folder. You, as mayor, you're first.
Wow, how about that?
So you're certifying yourself.
It's never been so easy.
So these are the certificates of election. So the mayor signs those. Again, it's just for Jim Lilly as mayor, Rene for Ward 4, and Bonnie for Ward 2.
All right, well, we've got a pretty easy agenda. Item behind me from right off the bat. All right, now on to item 5. Discussion of possible action regarding the appointment of mayor pro temp as selected among the members of the council per requirement of the city of McGregor's Home Rule Charter.
That buzz way too much. You get to select a person on this august body as a mayor pro temp. I was in the charter and you get to do it traditionally. They've given it to the longest serving. Andrew kind of broke that tradition last year, wasn't he, Andrew?
Yeah.
Kind of stepped away and that's when Paul was appointed. Now you're gonna pick one of yours.
Well, I would gladly pick one of mine if one of mine is willing to step up. No one?
I would like to ask, I would like to ask Fuzz who would want to be mayor pro temp?
Well, that's...
Because I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to nominate someone if they don't, you know, that's only a matter of time. So I would ask the question, who would, who would want to serve as mayor pro temp?
And I would agree, and I think we have an eager taker right between us.
Would I nominate Rene Flores for mayor pro temp?
There's nominations. We have a nomination and we have a second on that nomination. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations, Brandon. All right, now we're gonna hear from our buddies at Walker Partners. Item number 6, discussion of possible action regarding approval of proposal for design of pedestrian signal improvements at the intersections of State Highway 317 at Third Street and State Highway 317 at Sixth Street, as presented by Walker Partners.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First, let me say congratulations to both of you and Renee for your reelection. Tonight before you is a proposal, as mayor mentioned, as the agenda describes, for pedestrian signal improvements at 317 at Third Street and Sixth Street. As you know, obviously, there are existing signals there, but there are no crosswalk signals. And so this project is, we would be working in conjunction with Tech Dot to install signals for pedestrian crossings there at those, both of those intersections. It is part of a grant program with Tech Dot, so there's an 80/20 cost share, Tech Dot bearing 80% of the cost and the city bearing the other 20%.
All right, and I believe you were, everybody was giving the proposal? It's in here somewhere.
I guess it's in this stuff.
There it is. Okay, what is city staff saying about this proposal?
It's nice to have Tech Dot say for those two signals. I only wish they'd have done all four of them. They get there sooner or later. Badly needed, especially on those two, especially if probably won't be done by Founder's Day this year, but Founder's Day is going to be able to change this very quickly.
All right, does council have any questions about this? All right, hearing no questions about this, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposal for design of pedestrian signal improvements at the intersection of 317 at Third and 317 at Sixth Street, as presented by Walker Partners.
Sir, I have motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Jacob. Item number 7, hold a public hearing regarding conceptual plan for Skyrock Ranch planned use development.
All right, good evening, council. Development for this project is not here, so I'm just gonna present their slideshow as he sent it to me. His proposal is for a residential air park. So he has proposed a piece of property that's on Cotton Belt Parkway, about 34 acres, to be 20 home sites. He wants to install 2,600-foot-long runway paved, hanger homes. Each one of those homes would have a hanger on the back with access to the runway, taxiway access on each property, fitness community center, have a HOA to maintain all the facilities. Chris Avans and Carlos Sura are the developers for this property, and then he's listed some folks that he's been in contact with there that are interested in the project. I'm just kind of going over his briefly here. He does want to have gated entrance, which you will have to have for security, tennis courts, and central mailbox, which post offices making everybody go to. This is a concept of what he would like to build or have seen on the property, so large custom homes with great presentation from the street side, and then on the backside would be a hanger. He has expressed an interest in having the runway lit. I'm not sure how those, I think those lights are activated by the pilot as their own approach, if I'm not mistaken. And then just different, different aeronautical things there. I'm not, I'm not a pilot, so I'm not gonna speak to it. But that's what is his preliminary concept is there with the homes. Carlos and Chris have expressed that they would have larger lots because they are developers, but they want to sell off the individual lots there.
So how far is it from the actual runways?
They would be on the runway. So like they open the hangars in the back of the house, plane goes out, taxis and takes off. There's, they live next door to the runway. This is just some example rules over here. His HOA has not come up with, has not presented anything for like HOA wording, but stuff like wouldn't be able to take off after a certain time of day or before a certain time in the morning. No training, no major repairs. So they could do like small maintenance, but they couldn't do an overhaul of an engine or something like that there. No rentals, so it wouldn't be somewhere where somebody could rent it. They would have to live there and reside and have the structure. So we are waiting on the paperwork from the FAA to come back to see if they even want to approve this. I've talked to Tech Dot Aviation and they have stated that whatever the FAA comes back with, that that's what they're gonna side with. We did receive from our airport consultant today, an overlay of the approach from McGregor Airport. I don't have it on the slide, but there is some overlap there, so we're not sure that the FAA is even gonna approve this, just for safety reasons. The airport for McGregor goes true north-south, and these gentleman's project is east-west, so there's some overlap in the approach from the, from the southeast. So this is a little bit of, of a concept of what he would like to have built. Again, this is a runway, a hanger, and the runway would be somewhere right here for the home. This is a typical layout of what they're looking at. This is a, just another house that he wants to, something he wants to see built out there, just examples. This is another air park in Indiana that has, these homes all have access to a taxiway here, and then the runway is right there. So it's a little small one, similar to that, but the concept is the same, direct access to an airport. He has indicated that these are all different air parks. Blue are just prop planes, green allow, I'm sorry, blue allow jets, green is just prop planes, red are for sale, have lots for sale. There is kind of a desert here for air parks, and they are growing in popularity, so it would be the one of its kind kind of in the area, the first of its kind in the area. And he said, if I remember correctly, Texas is second only to Florida in private airports and pilots. So this is where his property is at. This is, the Cotton Belt Crossing subdivision is slated to be right here. This is Wildflower. This is Train. So the property is just down Cotton Belt here, 34 acres. The purple are other airports that are in the area. And this is the McGregor Airport here, which is just three nautical miles from this property. This is a rendering of what he would like to see, where you have a road in the front of the houses, and then each house has a taxiway there, can take off on the runway. Another concept there, overlay. So it would be the first in the area with an air park if he can get it off the ground. The biggest thing right now for him is really get FAA approval and see where we can go from that. He is in the ETJ, he's not in the city limits. Have expressed to him that we would be willing to serve it and probably come up with some kind of rate for that, and then a developer agreement so that if an adjacent property annexed in, then there's what annex in. They are not contiguous, so we couldn't annex them to begin with. So I did do a site visit to a similar place, a con plantation, much larger. This one is 4,200 acres, but they do have a 5,000-foot runway here and a 3,000-foot runway here, and these homes that are... and a three-thousand-foot runway here. And these homes that butt up against these runways, you know, they're like an acre, acre and a half, and a pretty substantial investment. The ones with direct access to a taxiway are two-hundred thousand dollars for a lot, and the ones with direct access to the runway are three-hundred fifty thousand dollars for a lot. And they still have to build the house, they have HOA dues and that kind of stuff. So it is an upper-tier residential development, and it is something pretty unique in a niche market. He, he did, the developer of this, we did have some pretty deep conversation about some things that he told us to avoid and other stuff, but his strongest thing was to see what the FAA said on that. That's all I have on that one. I think it's a unique concept, but we're, right now, we're concerned with the safety from, in the air.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six fifty-eight. I don't believe anybody came to speak on that. I'm just not seeing anybody, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty-eight. Move on to agenda item eight, and that's discussion and possible action regarding conceptual plan for Skyrock Ranch planned use development. Now, Brian, this is definitely just the conceptual plan, correct?
Right, it's just conceptual.
We still have several more steps before we...
Correct.
Okay.
You're not approv, you're not approving any, any plating, any utilities, any agreements? It's just the conceptual plan, and because it's cost prohibitive, I think, for their development to try to do individual wastewater for each home site, and to do it well, or become their own water supplier. So they are only twelve-hundred feet from Cotton Belt Crossing, so they could get utilities through that. So it just makes sense for them. So being that they need utilities, and they are in the ETJ, they have to come before y'all, but it is conceptual tonight. There's no technical or mechanical that we're talking about.
All right. Does anybody have any more questions?
They did come and spoke for the planning and zoning, and the planning and zoning get recommended for this conceptual plan.
And they need the conceptual plan to get approval?
As part of a, as part of a plan development, they would have to pitch the conceptual. They are in the ETJ, so the plating comes in, but the, for the conceptual, it's part of a plan development, for us to come into some agreements later on, as far as utilities and annexation, or any other agreements that we want to have with them.
Anyway, conceptual probably helped them, helped the FAA know that it's real. There is a slight overlap with our approach from our airport. So there's, there's some issues that are going to have to be worked out. We're not going to waste a lot of time on it until FAA says it will be doable. We'll be looking at utilities. There's still a lot of high and dot tees to cross before this thing gets off the ground, but it is very unique. We've also notified, notified Waco's planning department, that's aware of it, because it, one of the approaches is right over there, what will be there, signal limits, goes from our ETJ to their ETJ. So there's a lot that's going to be weighed in, but I think it's a good thing to look at.
Okay. So just, yeah, just in order to get this going, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Make a motion regarding the conceptual plan for the Skyrock Ranch planned use development.
I still had a question.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Non-discussion.
So I know we have them around the areas, like you said, up in, we saw the map in Dallas and then, you know, down in Austin. So like, what, with the, I mean, do we see a need for that here?
He's expressed that he, with him and his partner having the two home sites, he already has five people that have expressed an interest in buying them home sites to build custom homes, hanger homes on. So that would be seven already, just in the conceptual phase. And talking to the developer at Pecan Plantation, he says they, they basically, they can't build theirs or develop theirs fast enough to get folks in there. They have a hundred and ten home sites up there, so this one would be much smaller. But I do have some aviation contacts. I reached out to a couple of them, and they've been pilots for three or four decades, and they said that these are the hot thing right now for pilots to be able to live and just have a runway in their backyard.
Are these going to be like Airbnbs, or they're going to be actual home?
They have to be, well, primary residence, or, you know, some of these people, they may be a second home. But that would be something for the HOA to work out for as far as like the rentals. If they're in the ETJ, there's not a lot of control that we have on the, on the rental thing, at least initially.
All right. Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number nine, we're looking to hold a public hearing regarding preliminary plan development plan for the ranch.
I have one of the developers here. Did you want to talk tonight, Felipe?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, we, I had presented to this developer that we may be able to do some kind of conditional approval for their plat, came up with a whole laundry list of what we still need to be done, as far as like the developer agreement, ordinance, those types of things. But the state statute actually says that we can't use any agreements, traffic studies, or any other kind of studies, anything for the decision-making for, for a plat. So that wasn't going to work as far as like a conditional approval. Right now, we don't have the zoning overlay with the ordinance adopted yet. So they're asking for, they're asking for conditional approval on a preliminary plat for, for their project, and the, right now, the zoning doesn't match. So that puts us back where we were at a year ago, where we have a plat that doesn't match the zoning. In addition to that, I don't think that the developer was aware, but Jacob nor myself had the plat until about ninety minutes before Planning and Zoning last week. So we haven't had time to really review that and look at it. So I think that was just a miscommunication between their engineer and the developer, but we haven't had a chance to look at that. So Planning and Zoning did disapprove this preliminary plat. I've already set it up for next month, but y'all do have the ability to discuss this tonight and see if y'all wanted to either approve it, approve it with conditions, or disapprove it. And those are your, those are really your three options. So being, in my opinion, being that we received the plat last Monday, that could be day one, and then when Planning and Zoning meets next month, that would be still within the thirty-day shot clock, so they can make a decision on that. We are getting the, the planning ordinance finalized this week. We should have some of the other agreements done either this week or next week, depending on availability of staff in the city attorney. But right now, it, we're not ready to move forward with the planning ordinance or developer agreement.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at seven oh six, and I don't believe there's anybody here to speak on that either. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh six and move on to agenda item number ten, discussion and possible action regarding preliminary plan development plan for the ranch. Brian, how does it look as far as actually having everything prepared and ready to go for Planning and Zoning next month, and then to bring back to council?
So the ordinance is pretty much done. It's undergoing a proofread right now for the verbiage, so that one should be done. The development standards that the, the development standards that the developer has presented, those are done. Maybe a few minor things here or there. We are still waiting on a traffic impact analysis from Tech Dot. I'm not sure where that one is at, but I'm told it, it should be here fairly quickly. The developer agreement, which, where the city and the developer come to terms as far as like cost sharing on utilities and roads and things like that. Tomorrow, Jacob and Carolyn are supposed to have a conference call to put those numbers into our algorithm, that we're going to use probably the same that we use for SpaceX and a couple of other entities in town, as far as the payback schedule on that, and propose that to the developer. So we, Jacob has come up with some, some hard calculations based on what the developer needs for, to serve their project, but then the city feels that we should oversize a lot of those utilities for future growth. It's kind of inevitable in that area. So we're just putting those, putting those together. We should have the majority of that done this week, and then present it to the developer hopefully next week for their comments back. I anticipate that we will have the ordinance, the developer agreement, and the preliminary plat done in June. I talked to Scott, who's their project leader, supervisor, consultant, today, and he said that they should have some of their final engineering, at least for the commercial component, done as well. Can't get that on June, but if we can move things along, potentially, we could have them in July with a final for their Phase Two, which would be the commercial component. So they build out the commercial and some of the road, and then we can start looking at the other phases in the project. But hopefully get them digging in the dirt in the next sixty days at the latest.
We've been...
Trying.
Working with these guys for quite a while.
We have, yeah.
I know we'd like to see the progress, but we want to make sure that all the documentation is there beforehand.
Is that why the disapproval from planning?
Yeah, the zoning, the, without the ordinance with a zoning overlay, then the zoning doesn't match. They have commercial, they have some multifamily or medium density, and then they have some smaller lot sizes that we don't actually have a zoning for. So without the overlay, they're proposing stuff that we just don't have in our ordinance. So they need the, the ordinance to be accepted as well. And then we need time to look at things, measure, I mean, it sounds trivial, but measure things like curbs and lot lines and things like that, and just make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be.
Bonnie, would you like to make a motion on this?
The possible, um, yeah.
Okay.
Just let it sit.
Okay.
Until next week.
All right. Not hearing a motion?
It's just me, like we just died on the line.
Okay. Well, I have them already with the newspaper on the agenda for next month, so I'm anticipating that, that will, everybody will be ready to go on both sides.
All right. Okay, item number eleven, discussion and possible actions regarding Resolution R-062024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of McGregor, selecting an elected official of the city as the city's nominee for service as a member of the governing body of the McLennan County Rural Transit District.
Stephen Duchemin has been serving in that capacity for us since the very beginning. He has not indicated that he wishes to get off, but he's not here to defend himself.
Well, that is perfect.
So we'll just leave him alone.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to put Stephen Douglas back on the, what is this, the McLennan County Rural Transit District.
You need the resolution, I agree. Enjoy. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Item twelve, discussion and possible action regarding selection of nominee on ballot for seat two on McLennan County 911 Emergency Assistance District.
Council nominated a while back Van Smith for that position. He is on that ballot.
Yeah, I remember that.
I suspect that we probably will go for the guy that we nominated.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a, a motion to recommend Van Smith on the ballot for seat, seat two on McLennan County 911 Emergency Assistance District.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion?
Sorry, who's that?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Our motion carries. We're going to back Van Smith. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the vacancy created by a member being voted into the office of City Council. This is something normally with our city boards and commissions, we make sure to get out into the community and ask for volunteers. Planning and zoning is doing quite a bit right now, and I think this is a position that we should try to fill for the unexpired term that was left vacant.
It's a year and a half, his unexpired term. Bonnie's, was pointed in October, so there's a year and a half left on that term, and they are very busy right now. So getting somebody in there quickly is, is pretty important.
Who wants to make a motion, David Taylor? Well, we, we do have David Taylor as a volunteer. We all know that he did very well on City Council, serving the City of McGregor. So I would, I would like to make that recommendation, but it is not my choice.
Now, that, this, this what, an unexpired term, or what?
Yes, this is for Bonnie's unexpired term on planning and zoning.
Would you be for, for what, uh?
Year and a half.
Year and a half.
Can we do that?
And who's, who's the individual you're saying?
David Taylor.
David Taylor.
Okay.
There's a letter of, of emails, I mean, it's in the packet. Did you see it?
Nope.
Yeah, there's a letter in there from.
That's why I was looking.
Oh, sorry.
Item thirteen, it sits on.
It's the very last page of the packet. Where you can have mine.
I didn't see it.
Yeah. But y'all got it there, is right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
You want to entertain a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate David Taylor for the unexpired term on the zoning board.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second for David Taylor to serve Bonnie's unexpired term on planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
We don't have to help.
All right.
We need to have a party for Bonnie. She served, she served there twenty-seven years.
All right, item fourteen, receive financials as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and quarterly investment reports. Carolyn, prepare to stun us.
Yes.
Good, good.
Be careful with. Beating a head start on tomorrow. Okay, I have the financials for tonight. I also put before you a preliminary budget calendar, and I'm going to need y'all to look over and mark your personal calendars. We're going to be busy in August, as normal. March represents fifty percent of our fiscal year, and as you can see, general fund is at, revenues were at fifty-nine point one, and expenditures were at thirty-nine point eight. Again, I'll remind everybody, but a lot of that is we collect our tax dollars upfront, so we have to stretch that out to, through September. Our utility fund was at forty-seven point five revenue and forty-one percent, and this is compared to budget. Our exchange events center is at forty percent of budget on revenues and sixty-three percent on expenditures. And the airport is at sixty, almost sixty-five percent on revenue and thirty-seven percent on expenses. Our net cash in bank is two-point-two million more than the same period last year. Operating expenses are up a hundred forty-seven thousand. Pool cash is up one-point-three million. Grants are up six-hundred ninety-seven. Capital projects are down seventy-seven point nine, and debt services up a hundred and five, point four, as compared to March last year. General fund net cash flow is four-hundred-and-five-point-five-thousand lower than the previous year. Revenue is down two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and expenditures are up a hundred and sixty-seven as compared to March. The revenue decrease is due to lower building permit fees of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Expenditure increases include... Expenditure increases include supplies, equipment, maintenance, and personnel charges, offset by a decrease in contracted services. The exchange net flows are down twelve point four as compared to the same period last year. Revenues are down six thousand and expenses are up six point four. Building maintenance is up seven point eight with the remainder of the increase relating primarily to personnel charges. As you remember, we added folks. Municipal airport net cash flows are down thirteen three as compared to the same period in fiscal year twenty three. Revenues are up twenty seven thousand and expenses are up forty thousand. The expenditure increases include primary capital outlay of twenty five thousand two hundred with the remainder of the remaining increase in personnel charges and building maintenance. We'll see that probably continue to climb because this year our grant is a ninety ten... Well, I thought Barry was still here. It's a ninety ten instead of a fifty fifty, so we're gonna, up to a hundred thousand. So we're gonna try to get what we can out of our grant. That's just what I just gave you in writing. And then again, the other one is, keep going, one more, two more. That's what you're, what I just read to you basically, but there you get to see it in chart form. And then there's our sales tax. Our sales tax cumulatively for our year-to-date through March of this year is a million two sixty three one eighty one. You can see that it continues to climb, so. And then the last page is our investment report, our quarterly investment report. And this shows that we have seventy seven percent of our money in managed pools with the other twenty three percent being in the bank. We had a hundred fifty eight thousand eight oh nine in interest for the quarter, and the net change from, in our funds from March and December was one million three eighty two with special revenue being one of the larger changes. Other than that...
All right, does anybody have any questions for Carolyn?
If we have any conflicts with the calendar, the sooner we know the better because on some of them, I have one day, maybe two, that we can, we can move, but it's pretty tight with what the state legislature says we have to do it by.
All right. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, move on to item number fifteen, closed session. Closed meeting pursuant to Chapter five five one Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Section five five one point zero seven one legal, Section five five one point zero seven two real estate, Section five five one point zero four personnel, and Section five five one point zero eight seven economic development. And I'm assuming that we're going in under economic development, is that correct? All right, so we're going to go into closed session at seven twenty one.
Go ahead and go back into open session at 7:58. And there's no action to be taken from our closed session, so agenda item sixteen, announcements from the city manager.
I have, uh...
Okay, do we have any requests or comments from the council?
Uh, just, uh, welcome to our new mayor, Jim Lilly, and welcome to Bonnie Mullins. And even though Jim and Paul are not here, maybe they'll, they'll miss it and they'll watch the YouTube, but (laugh) you know, as a citizen of McGregor and also working alongside them and serving our community, again, just say thank you to them.
Okay. I would, I would like to say welcome too, and I would hope and pray that, you know, I've been here, uh, next year would be twenty-five years if the Lord blessed me to make it today. But, uh, I would hope that the whole time that I've been up here all those years, that I would hope this council and the future council, you know, people have always said or say, "Yeah, yeah, I agree with everything." Everybody agreed, you know, the same with that, but it's not, because everybody up here got a different opinion. Everybody up here, the council, if you elected, you know, got a different idea or see thing, different appeal, it should go this way or that way. But I think the best part that I saw in working with Jim and Paul all those years, because they got on here before I did, but we was always, they were, we didn't always agree. And then a lot of people saying that, if they'd have been here and come to the meeting and been out there, you know, you would see it was some no votes. It was time that, you know, a no vote was taken, somebody voted no or whatever. So, but you still have to understand, in a democracy, you, you still part your opinion, and if you feel strongly about it, you stay with it. But then you be able to accept the part, when you vote on something and it passes, and you be a part of it. And you don't want to be always, you know, to the point of just agreeing to agree, because that, that's what you would, when the citizen elects you, they want your opinion too. That's why they elected you as a councilor and as the mayor. So I would just hope that, uh, the future of this council stays in line, count along with that for, you know, uh, the council working with each other, and it's, all, all of us should be about this citizen McGregor. That's why you're elected to this council. And I would hope it, it was continue, you know, under your tutelage. And I'm glad to welcome to the council. And Bonnie, which she already promoted, who wasn't a councilwoman, she's been, you know.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. Unless anybody has anything else, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at eight oh one.